Bring to, oh. I'd like to bring to order the Monday, April 8th meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Paul?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor Janek?
Present.
Counselor DiMaderis?
Present.
Counselors Edwards, Burke, and Milborn are absent.
Burke, Burke is coming at some point. Consent agenda, approval of the town council minutes, March 25th, 2024, regular meeting. Counsel Milborn abstains, absent, March 25th, 2024, executive session, Counsel Milborn abstains, absent. Acknowledged receipts and minutes from boards, commissions, and committees, zoning board of review, two, economic development, two, historical cemeteries, one. Acknowledged receipts of reports from the town administrator, departments' monthly reports, March 2024, town administrator, police and fire department overtime reports, March 2024. Acknowledged receipts of correspondence, letters from Jeff McNally regarding proposed ordinance that will amend section 5432, letters from Dennis Zimbrotto regarding proposed ordinance that will amend section 5432, letter from Kenny Mendes regarding proposed ordinance restricted fishing, Town of Hopkins, resolution supporting S2016- relating to towns and cities, low and moderate income housing, Town of Hopkins, resolution opposing HB7324, related to towns and cities zoning ordinance, Town of Hopkins, resolutions opposing HB7382, relating to towns and cities zoning ordinance, Town of Hopkins, resolution opposing HB7986, related to property, abandoned property, Town of Hopkins, resolution opposing HB7951, relating to towns and cities, Rhode Island comprehensive planning and land use data. Town of Hopkins, resolution opposing HB7978, relating to subdivision of land. Town of Hopkins, resolution opposing HB7958, relating to towns and cities, multifamily housing act. Town of Hopington, resolution pledging to keep Rhode Island litter free, Town of Burryville, resolution opposing HB7763, SB2679, relating to public records, to public records act. Town of Richmond, resolution regarding education funding formula, Town of Richmond, resolution opposing any revival of old Sabre to Kenyon bypass. Letter from Denise Parnish regarding council resolution in support of suicide prevention barriers on bridges over Narragansett Bay. Approval of tax assessor abatement, $10,261.47. Any councils like to take anything from the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, just gonna grab one of them, how about D4?
Anyone else?
Yeah. D, D6, D13, D15.
Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
D4, D6, D13, and 15. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? D4.
Yeah, so I just, obviously, Town of Hopington's been very busy as have some other municipalities in the northern end of the state.
You think so?
And the question I have actually is as it relates to all of these bills, I'm assuming we're getting, they're getting some of this information probably from like the League of Cities and Towns, so would it be possible if that's going out for, I'm assuming the administrator's getting this stuff too, no?
No, I don't see it wanting to come here.
But anything from like the league, where's the league?
League doesn't send me every bill.
No?
I think they're just sending us every bill they do.
Okay.
Because I discussed this, that I was, they're really doing a lot.
Should we be doing more?
We can support them.
Okay.
If you want to pick any of these out and support them, I'm obliged to put them here if they send.
Of course. But a lot of it, a lot of these relate to zoning, and as we know, zoning is problematic for us with the law changes, so.
It is for everybody at the moment.
Yeah.
Well, I can have Mike and Todd look at some of these zoning ones and see if they agree and whether or not we should support them.
And, and, you know, perhaps in light of some of the discussions we had, and we had to go back and amend our zoning code and some of the areas that we found issue with when this council discussed it, maybe we can pull out some of those bills. I just want to make sure we're not missing opportunities to support or oppose legislation at the state level that would benefit or hurt us. And that's it. Thank you.
I'll do them all at once, the approvals. Deb, D6.
Okay, D6 does talk about bill, House Bill 2024 H7382, it amends the definition of a household to change the number of unrelated individuals together from three to one person per bedroom. So there's general concern that this would make homes more desirable for short term and seasonal rentals, and I think that we should support this because one of the concerns is that we did see a big decrease in our educational funding this year, and some of that was because of our increase in our, our housing, and so make it, and I think some of it is because of short term rentals, and if we increase and make it more desirable for short term rentals and kind of make it too expensive and people are not able to afford housing in town, it will cause people to not be living in town, and it will cause our educational funding to decrease even further. So I'd like to support 4D6.
Can Deb make a motion to support this tonight?
I think we'd probably have to put in another.
Put in another?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair? If I
Yes.
If I could just comment on this, and I know it's gonna come up, I look at the short term rentals slightly different, I think, than most. Couple years back, when President DiMaderis was, I believe, Vice President DiMaderis, and Patricia Hilton was our president.
That's way back.
Way back. You know, there was a look at all of the tax rates across the state, and where Tiverton fell was right in the middle, and the reason why we couldn't be at the absolute bottom is because communities like Newport, Little Compton have something that we don't have, and it's a large number of people that own homes that are, you know, seasonal, summer homes, you know, basically dark houses in the winter, so, you know, from a, you know, tax base, if somebody owns a house and they're not using services, like, so not sending kids into the schools, not utilizing police, fire, someone, and so forth, that's actually beneficial to the town long term. I understand there's, you know, questions around affordable housing, and there's certainly solutions that are being taken forward there, but it may not be the worst thing in the world if it's going to, you know, encourage more short term rentals, which aren't going to be putting kids in the schools. So, just my thoughts, thank you.
It just increases the cost of the homes, so.
All right.
4D13?
Yep.
This is the Town of Richmond, and they're looking at the educational funding formula, and I'd like to propose that we do a resolution to support that also, since the funding formula for the state certainly did not help us this year.
So we'll put that on the next agenda.
Next agenda. And then 4D15 is the resolution from, this came from the Samaritans of Rhode Island, is to support suicide prevention barriers on the bridges over Narragansett Bay, and apparently Senator DePalma and Representative Joseph Solomon have been trying, along with the Samaritans, have been trying to push this through for a couple of years, but I think it's important that we support that also.
We'll put it on the next agenda. Right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve D4, 6, 13, and 15.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Now, I'm looking at the public hearing, and it looks like everything is going, the public comment is mostly concerned with what we're gonna be talking about in a few minutes, so I'm gonna let you all speak at that, if that's okay with you. The only other thing is Adam Reposa, is he here?
Yep, yep, he's there.
Adam, the carpenter street, does that have to do with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so I'll let you speak, okay. And Jamie, water and public hearing, that has to do with?
I have a public comment.
All right, come on up.
I'm also here about public hearings, why waste the time with public comments?
No, but as long as it doesn't have to do with the Grinnell's Beach and fishing. Okay, because I'm gonna let everyone speak about that in a few minutes.
I know, that's the public hearing.
Thank you. Jamie French Craig Avenue, I'm here about water. In North Tiverton, it shows on the comprehensive community plan that there is no alluvial wetlands or artesian water in North Tiverton. Growing up, the whole place was a wetland. It was marshes, brooks, springs, water sprang out of ground everywhere. When the farmers piped the water and developers were allowed to pipe the water up to 1970. So we have pipes, cement pipes in the ground everywhere that are 55 years old and much older, and they have been breaking. Before they even began breaking, the Robert Gray stormwater drainage system had to be put in to stop houses that were sitting on marshes from having their basements filled up. Those houses are directly, their sump pumps are directly hooked to those water drainages. There is also some sewage that is hooked to it that no one addresses, and the data from 2010 from DEM shows that there is during dry times sewage coming out of the Robert Gray discharge, which is why we need sewers, because we don't want to clean up. But anyway, in the meantime, there's been a lot of water coming back, and there's been this continual problem of who knows why the pipes are breaking, but people are beginning to have water. On top of that, artesian water will find its way through, and it looks, my question is, is, you know, how much artesian water is actually breaking through underneath our roads, washing out the dirt underneath the asphalt, and eventually will be causing sinkholes? And it seems to me that in, in town, we spend a lot of our time, our money, and our resources talking about how we can bring commercial development to North Tiverton, not in South Tiverton, but we never look at the infrastructure that we have, the existing infrastructure. Our infrastructure's getting old, and it's only a matter of time before some of the roads wash out and we have sinkholes. And I don't think we should be blaming other departments like water departments or sewer departments for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Michael Rogers here? Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to bring 7A and B up.
So moved.
Second.
Most of them mean second, all those in favor? Come on up, Mr. Rogers. I didn't think you wanted to sit through what's coming up next, so. I'm getting, hi, how are you?
Hello, hi.
All right, so. Do you want to talk a little bit about?
Yeah, so Courtney Roger from Recovery, this is, this will be our seventh event. During COVID, we had, we did one of them, what do we call it?
Virtually.
Virtually, yeah. But this is our, this will be our seventh run. We started it in, first one was 2018. It's for, we lost our daughter, Kristen's sister, from opioid overdose.
Oops, sorry. It was a previous one.
Time's up.
And so all the funds we raise go to, we usually pick a recovery house that Courtney was either in, she was in many, or a new one. And if you look at from 2018 to this year, we've definitely given away dollars over $50,000. And so the last three years, it's been $10,000, $16,000 one year, you know, so we're, we have a steadily increase every year, and we've, we've got a good group of runners and walkers that come out for it, usually about 150 people. So it's just a great event, a lot of people look forward to it. Takes us, we moved it, the first year we had, we had started at nine o'clock, it was hot, and then, so we brought it back to eight o'clock, which makes it, the hour makes a difference, and it's earlier, and we're, we're in and out of there by 10 o'clock, we're done with the, with the run. We go counterclockwise, we, we, we start the parking lot in front of the medical office, we basically set up everything there now, and we start there, and we go south on Main Road, it's a great course, you know, you get the water basically up, and then, but down by Evelyn's, we make that left, and then back along Highland, and then all the way down to Main, and then back again, so it's a, it's a 5K run. So it's a great event, people look forward to it, and like I said, it's for a cause. Everyone knows that opioid addiction is a big problem in the country, and we're trying to do our part and keep Courtney, Courtney's doing more on earth than, in heaven than she could do on earth.
Thank you. I looked at the date, and there's nothing else going on, I believe, on that date.
That's the, that's, the day we picked, just say, it's this Saturday, closest to Courtney's birthday. Courtney's birthday's on the 23rd, so.
And of course, you'll talk to the police department and get all that settled.
Yeah.
Any questions? Yes.
A quick question for you, when does registration open?
Sometime after this.
Okay. I feel like rather than complaining about the driving situation every year, I'm just gonna run this thing.
Yeah.
Anybody else in?
He'll pick up his coffee and then he'll go running.
Oh, get coffee afterwards.
Ten bucks if you beat him.
You in?
How about 20?
Any other questions? It's a great, it's great, and we've had no problems with you doing this. Last year, there was a little mix up because the police didn't name it, the route got a little bit, they got a little confused about the route, but that was certainly not your fault, so.
So we have the police on board with the correct route this year? Because I know that was a misunderstanding on their part, not on yours.
I mean, we've, we've had a good relationship with everyone, the police.
We've done well.
Yeah, yeah, so, I just think it's a great event, it's a nice route, people, we get a lot of the same people all the time, so I look forward to it.
I think, I think it's great that you have turned this into a positive and have turned back so much more money into programs, because it's so needed.
I agree, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Like to entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, President motion to approve, subject to meeting all legal requirements. I'll second.
Second.
Motion to amend, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, good luck.
And Ted Bisco, I don't know if I said your name right, I'm sorry. Special event permit for Tiverton Four Corners, 4th of July Antique Show, July 4, 2024, from 9 to 4. Where is this at, Tiverton Four? Oh, at the meeting house. Okay.
We asked you to come back because of, you had to find out about parking.
Correct, yes.
Yes.
So I spoke to Jim Holland, he's agreed to let me use his field at 3949 Main Road. I also spoke to Chief Jones at the last meeting, and I spoke to him today. He, he has no objections to providing a detail, and he has tons of suggestions that I'm gonna go with.
I'm sure he does, yeah.
So, yeah, so.
Any questions? Entertained a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the special event permit for Tiverton Four Corners, 4th of July Antique Show, July 4, from 9 to 4:00 PM, subject to meeting all the legal requirements.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing discussion, and, oh, I'd like to start off by saying, there was a group of us that volunteered to work on these three, these three amendments to the code of ordinance, and this was all brought up because of problems that we had last year at Grinnell's Beach. I was there, Attorney Musk, not this attorney, the other attorney was there, the team of police and the recreation committee, and Counsel Paul was also present. This is a template. We never meant for this to be written in stone, but it's a place where we had to stop and go from there. I will have to say, I've heard a lot on social media, we did not change the fishing area at all. The DEM grant, which I was part of, has the fishing area where it is now, and they approved that fishing area. As long as we have a fishing, they require us to have a fishing area, so we gave them on the map. The abutment was a federal grant, and the town owns that abutment. During those discussions, there was no requirement to have fishing there. They did say if we did have fishing there, that we shouldn't have fishing on the north end, and where the rocks where the drainage is, and I haven't been there in a while, I'm not sure where that is. We never talked about fishing there, we didn't say we wanted to fish in there at the time. There has been fishing there, which only has become a problem recently because it's taken up the whole abutment. And I'll be honest, I don't think it's the fishermen in front of me, all right? I'm very honest. The few times that I've been called down there, it was families, the kids are running everywhere, I actually caught, I, I caught a child's by the shirt, almost fell in because the gate was open, the parents are unsupervising these children, and it's, I don't recognize any of you, and I've been there four to five times. That was a problem. And residents were calling me saying they tried to walk down there before sunset, and they, they couldn't even get down there, there were people everywhere, one almost got hit by a hook, and so that's when I brought it to the council, and they said, well, let's try to work this out where everyone can enjoy it, the fishermen can, and the residents can, and the people who want to be on the beach can. And if we all try to compromise and get along, I think this will all work out. The police chief did have some problems with, he's, you, you can tell them they can't, like, they're fishing in the bathing area, but there's no fines or any, there's nothing you can do, just you can't fish there, and then they go back the next night. So we asked us to put some fines on this. If you're not in the restricted areas, you'll be fined, and that's the same thing with the parking, right, Chris?
You'll be okay. You said fined.
Oh, yeah. No, you won't be fined if you're there fishing the right way. And the same thing with the parking, we've been having problems with the parking, and the police can't enforce, the police can tell you not to do it, but they need some kind of enforcement, and he's the one that asked that, that we put some regulations on this. He's not here tonight, he's not feeling well, so he's home. I don't intend on having a vote tonight, just discussion, hearing from all of you, continue it to next week, take your suggestions.
Next meeting.
At next meeting, and tweak it, and, but this was never, this was just a baseline to start off, because it was a problem the summer before, and we never really did anything about it. All right?
Madam President, can I piggyback off that?
Sure.
I, full disclosure, I am one of the people last summer, before the council, I go down there frequently with my daughter at night, spring, summer, even into the fall, and last summer seems to be the most popular time of year, or the most popular year so far for that abutment. This is really a three-legged issue, one of them being the parking. On several of those nights, we, I mean, again, at the time, just being a layperson, hearing friends to complain about not being able to go down there and park at night. I started going down more frequently, and 37 of the 40 cars in the lot have Massachusetts plates, so one of the issues here that we have is parking. The other, the other issue is enforcement. I've talked to some of you guys outside of here, and we all agree that DEM doesn't really realize Tiverton exists, so they don't come down here. Tiverton police are not trained to handle DEM stuff, so they'll handle what they can as far as enforcement, but they don't handle that type of stuff. And the other one being, as, as Madam President said, was the safety and the kids. It's, it's not necessarily a CSO's, the community safety officer's responsibility to chase kids around and find parents and say, hey, is this your kid? But it's, it's getting crazy down there. I agree that this seems a little heavy-handed, but that's why these are public hearings, and I've heard some great suggestions already from some of you, and I think we can definitely work off of more public comments tonight. Nobody wants to restrict fishing, I, I fish down there. I don't want to restrict fishing, I don't think anybody up here wants to restrict fishing. And I, again, I was talking to, I'll just say, Cody last night, yeah, the state of Rhode Island's got a lot of stuff going on with the shoreline and restriction and access, and it's crazy, it's the ocean state. So I don't think we should be restricting, I just think we should work together and come up with some type of solution.
I think there has to be, the fishermen has to be respectful of the people that just want to walk and hang around the beach, and vice versa, and, and that wasn't happening last summer. We're also working on that gate that goes to the dinghy dock, because that's where there were actually fishermen on the other side of the, like, that little ledge, fishing, and this child was running to her father, and, and she went running by me, tripped, and I grabbed her, she would have went right in the water. So we're also working on a way to close that gate. That dinghy dock, people rent it, so we're thinking of like a cod system where if you want to come over, you have the cod for the season, and that's the only way you can get in and out of there, because people are actually fishing on that little small ledge, and children are running up and down that ledge, and I'll be honest, and David will, a minute, he called me one night when he wasn't on the council, and said, you gotta see what's going on, and it was, it was dangerous, and we're liable if a child falls in, and if some, so that's how this started, it was never meant to be exactly this, but it was a way to stop, because we had to start somewhere. All right, so, yeah.
We, we have a beautiful beach, we have beautiful beaches, and we want to keep them beautiful, and we want them beautiful for all of you and for everybody else, too, and not everyone respects our beaches, and there was a lot of trash being left there, there was a lot of, like, beer cans and cigarette butts and food wrappers and
Dead fish.
Dead fish. And nobody wants to walk in and, and bring their family there and see that, so we just want to make it so that people are respectful of our beaches. And I know Councilman Paul said that there are a lot of out-of-state plates, we can't restrict out-of-state people at our beach because we did have a grant to upgrade that beach, and so.
No, 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 we can, Rhode Island people, we can't restrict.
We can't restrict Rhode Island.
Rhode Island, but we can have a certain time where Massachusetts doesn't have, the same way Little Compton does it, at certain point.
If it's a certain time.
It's Rhode Island, it's, it's, because of the grant, Rhode Island residents, if we charge them, we have to charge ourselves, and if we restrict Tiverton people, we have to restrict Rhode Island, because it was Rhode Island DEM grant. But as far as the Massachusetts, there is no restriction on that for, like, certain hours, only Rhode Island residents are allowed in there, there's no restriction on that.
Okay, we, then we need to look at?
We, yeah.
Because?
Yeah, we need to look at that. In the morning, the maintenance, people have quite the challenge sometimes. Like, I went down there one day, and there was two cases of empty beers that they were picking up, and fires that were lit in the middle of the night down in the fishing area, which is not allowed. But there's a lot going on, and it's not the people that are obeying and doing the right thing, that's not who we're after. And we're not, we just want people to be considerate of everyone else that wants to enjoy that beach also. There was a lot of people, a lot of people that worked very hard to get those grants, and last summer really disappointed me to what was going on there, so.
Just two more points, and then it's public.
Then I'll open it up.
I, I just wanted to touch on, because we, we talked about the Massachusetts plates, and I, myself, said 37 of 40. I'll tell you right now, I, I've talked to a lot of people down there, met some really cool people, one of them, one of them was a woman from West Rock, uh, West Roxbury, apparently that's the place to go for scup. There are some wonderful people down there, so when I say 37 of the 40 plates were mass, I'm not trying to say anything other than, you know, that's what's clogging the beach. The people themselves, I, again, I've met some phenomenal people down there, but that is a way we can curb. But that is a way we can curb some of the overcrowding. When we talk about access to shoreline, it's not just for fishermen, it's for our residents to be able to park there also, and they can't even park there. And the only other thing is, it's going to probably be mentioned tonight, somebody had a great idea as far as a parking pass for fishermen, which could probably apply to at least Fogland, so, but that's something to add to it.
Oh, and that's another thing I wanted to say, the Fogland parking, we did not change either. The only thing we did change was in the ordinance, it brought up, what did it bring?
Went from Peckham Farm to the actual Rhode Island-
Yeah, so it brought up Peckham Farm, well, only as people that have been here forever knows where Peckham Farm is. So we changed that address. But that's the only thing we changed at Fogland as far as the parking was concerned. That was always there in the ordinance, I believe. That was one of the only things we changed. It's really Grinnell's Beach that has become the problem. All right, I'll open it up to public comment. The public hearing is now open. The first one is Justin. Justin, just H R S.
Absolutely. Justin Royas, 886 Crandall Road. I'm a town resident, been here my whole life, got my degree in environmental conservation at University of New Hampshire. Love recreation, love environmental, love clean beaches. I've been going to Fogland specifically for fishing for probably 15 years, I'm 38 now. And in 10 years, I'd say even eight years ago, you started to see, in my opinion, a lot more people going to that beach. Just as you're saying, a lot of Massachusetts residents, kind of punishes the Tiverton resident a little bit, in my opinion, not be able to go into your own backyard on any given day. With that being said, I just heard this last night, literally, about these things, I was like, I got to see what's going on with this. Because me personally, of last month, I've been putting my leaders together. I want to get my kayak out there, I want to go night fishing at Fogland. I don't want anybody to stop me. I want to be able to park my truck on Fogland. I want to be able to take my kayak out and go night fishing when the fish are there, and when it's not hot, I don't want to be sweating. On another level, though, during the daytime, understand, everybody has to share the beach, great scup fishing there during the daytime. And I mean, I don't know about you guys, but in this economy, I want some local fresh protein that I can get myself in my kayak. So, yeah, this is really concerning to me personally. As a Tiverton resident that's been fishing this my whole life, I'm not ignorant to the facts of the issues we have there. I mean, anybody that uses that can see that there's issues there. I think it's unfair to target fishermen, because let's be real, there's a lot of beachgoers drinking beers and going there and having campfires at night that have nothing to do with fishermen.
Well, we're also going to restrict all of that, too.
Well, this is just what I saw, was the fish, this just seems like targeting fishermen, which I get it, it sort of seems like to me a little bit, you know, fishermen, you can't go here, can't do this, okay. I mean, then the other thing, too, I think, was just the idea of the high-tide line, that I know we've already talked about that's a big thing in Rhode Island, the high-tide line rates that we have. But it's just, it opens up a can of worms, so you start regulating this, and then where does it end if you start regulating it here? I do think, I did actually talk to John earlier, I think Satchel's point they do, I want to say, where if you want to go fishing overnight, you can get a permit or a temporary pass or maybe something like that, and you can get an overnight parking permit, hey, my truck's here, I got my thing in the windshield, then I'm fishing, just leave me alone, you know? That kind of thing. One thing I caught my attention was the, when you said the north side of Fogland not being able to fish, that's like the rocky side.
No, 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 north, north side of Grinnell's on the abutment.
Oh, Grinnell's, okay, I thought you said Fogland, okay.
Because I thought there was a place where they don't want us to be.
Okay.
And it was the north side.
Because the north side of Fogland's a great fishing spot for rocks.
No, 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 no.
All right, awesome, awesome. All right, so I misunderstood that.
No, I probably didn't explain it.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, those, those are just my main concerns. Couple quick, this is the one quick solution as far as the overnight thing, and this is what, I'm thinking about Fogland, this goes to every other places, too, but me specifically, Fogland's what really hits home for me. And that was just one solution, I thought, like, the overnight pass thing. But again, doing that, though, you're not going to get rid of the teenagers going there drinking their beer cans, let's be-
Well, we will, because we're going to have more patrols down there.
More patrols, exactly, it's an enforcement.
So if you're a fisherman and have overnight fishing, they'll just ignore your car.
Yeah, yeah.
But the other cars, they won't, and we talked about this.
And maybe on another level, too, instead of it being like a nightly thing, maybe have like a weekly pass, because as an avid fisherman, I have to go get a freaking pass every single time. Excuse my language.
Well, I'm thinking seasonal.
Seasonal, too, yeah, yeah.
I'm even thinking that this would be for Rhode Island residents only.
Yeah, that's a big thing.
But we have to talk about that, I'm not sure I can legally do that.
I'm not sure.
I know. But Little Compton does, so we're going to look at why they can't.
Yeah, Little Compton, they allow, what do they do, they allow everybody there while the beach is open, and then once-
Everybody has to leave it for, if you don't live in Little Compton.
And on another level, too, honestly, let's say where the lifeguards are, where we have the beach, where we have little kids swimming, we don't need fishermen in that little, what, 300-foot area, we can, we can get rid of-
You're talking Fogland?
Fogland, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, where there's that little, you know what I mean, like, when you start going to the other side, that's where I think fishing, anybody who's fishing on the other side isn't really a responsible fisherman at that point, in my opinion.
I'm thinking fishing on that side is probably better.
Absolutely, my, yeah, absolutely.
But I don't know anything about fishing.
But, yeah, so those are, that's, that's my, my thoughts and concerns.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, guys.
Rich Hiddinger, am I good? Close?
Pretty, pretty close, yeah.
Okay.
Rich, Rich Hiddinger, yeah. So, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak. Although I'm not a Tiverton resident, I am the first vice president of Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers, and I represent 25 of our members who are Tiverton residents, and 100 of our affiliate members who are Tiverton residents. So we, we do have a lot of people who fish this area and who live here. So what I wanted to say is, I hope you reconsider these, these ordinances, because restricting fishing and restricting parking in both Fogland and Stone Bridge, especially in, at night, is going to be a restriction that prohibits many people from accessing what, something that they enjoy, and something that they use as protein, as the previous gentleman said. You know, this is something that people have done for decades in both locations, and I urge you to, to reconsider. And some people don't understand that nighttime fishing might be fishing for the entire evening. You know, some people will, will go down there, and they'll, they'll fish right until dawn.
I know.
And, and so, you know, be very careful about the parking restrictions and the hours-
Well, Grinnell's Beach has always locked the gates at 10 o'clock, so that's nothing new either. We closed the gates at Grinnell's at 10.
Okay.
So parking, like, that didn't change in this ordinance either.
And Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers, we've been very active in this area, and in fact, we have an organized, at least one organized outing every year in the Fogland area. And we've been on the Tiverton shore doing beach cleanups with Rhode Island DEM. So, so, you know, we're, we've got a lot of interest in this area. So, you know, if you can communicate with us about what the problem is that you're trying to solve, we'd be glad to, you know, possibly give our input. And, you know, I mean, things like a pass for vehicles, that's, that's something to consider, a seasonal pass, or even enforcing carry-in, carry-out bags for, for all your trash, you know? I mean, everybody should be doing that, and, and we've adopted many access points around the state, Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers have. And what we do is, we go to those access points and try and make people understand that they need to be carrying out all their trash, they need to be good neighbors. So, so whatever we can do, we're happy to do, but we really would like to see as much access as possible.
I think you just mentioned something that I was going to bring up. If you, if you're out there fishing and you see people throwing trash and doing, please help us and say, wait a minute, you shouldn't be doing that. I mean, I don't want you to beat them up or cause any kind of problems, but maybe if other people could help, too, and say, look, this is our, our beach, and you're coming here and you're throwing your beer cans out in the water, please don't do that, or, like-
Thank you. Mr. Hiddinger?
Yes.
I assume that your group is involved with some of the state beaches in terms of saltwater fishing regulations and the like?
Yes, absolutely.
So I'm looking at Roger Wheeler. What type of, so they're similar to most of the other state beaches, where saltwater fishing is off-hours only.
Okay.
And they do restrict their parking to 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., gates close at sunset. So how does that work for your members?
So what we have to do is park outside of that area and walk in.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. And the arrangements for, for saltwater fishing, were you involved with that, with them?
Not personally, but, but our organization was, yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I can leave my card with, with the-
Plurk?
Were you on the chamber board, in the fourth chamber? Okay, that's where I know you're from.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can just give it to Joan, and she can-
President David Harris, can you specify the area at Fogland that is in question? Because I know a lot of these people in this group probably are not familiar with the area that is at issue.
Are you on here, Cody? You're Cody, I do, okay.
I just, I know a lot of people probably think it's all of Fogland, and after talking with Councilman Paul here, it's not, it's not the whole Fogland beach.
Oh, no, it's not.
It's not. It's the boat ramp at the end of, at the end of Fogland Road there. That's the issue, and play.
Right, so if, if you know where the bathrooms are-
Yes.
In front of that is the bathing area.
Yes.
Over to the right, you can fish.
You can fish that whole side.
You can fish that whole side, and then to the left-
The place we get her from, the boat ramp residence, that's the area.
Yeah, the boat ramp residence where they're, but, but also, the residents to the right, where that road goes down there-
The soon-to-be island.
Yeah, those two houses, what?
The soon-to-be an island.
Yeah, the ones that are going to float away, they've complained a little bit, too, because, well, I'll be telling you, people have gone into their property and peed there, and like hid behind the bushes so no one can see them. So there's been some complaints, although that's getting better right now. But you can, you can fish that whole other area, we're not restricting that. But this is, we're not restricting anything that you normally could do. It's just the problem is, some people are ruining it for the rest of you, and that's what we're trying to figure out what to do about this.
Bad apples in every crop.
I'm going to let someone else speak, is that all right? And then-
Yeah, I just have a quick comment, but-
You want to do it before I-
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Name the next person.
Just because I looked, because we're talking about, like, areas for fishing and that kind of thing, and so I think it would be helpful, Recreation has a phenomenal-looking website, much better than the town of Tiverton's, and there's a section for beaches, and there's no information whatsoever on there, so perhaps we could-
Yeah, we can.
Get, get an actual map and then have that posted, so that people can go very quickly and say, okay, on Fogland, like, here are all the areas where you can fish. At Grinnell's, here's where, you know, the areas to fish are, because otherwise it's kind of ambiguous.
There is a map, I think, in the building official's office, because I looked to see the Grinnell's one, just to make sure I knew what was going on there.
Excuse me, I didn't sign to speak, but I feel like the, the answer to your problem is more patrol.
I'm going to let you speak. Let me do the ones on the list, and then I'll, anyone, yes, and yes.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Scott Travers, I'm the executive director for the Rhode Island Saltwater Anglers Association. Rich, Mr. Hiddinger has already spoken about the Saltwater Anglers Association and the members who live in the community here. We would be opposed to this. All three areas, Fogland, Grinnell's Beach, and Stone Bridge are historically significant fishing areas. So, wait, Stone, yeah.
Well, it's the abutment, yeah.
It's the abutment to it, yeah, gotcha. But also, the length in, increasing length of time prohibiting parking is going to further restrict access for even other residents of Tiverton who don't happen to live in the immediate area. So that's going to be a restriction on everyone. Personally, I retired from the town of Portsmouth after having worked there for 20 years, and I can tell you that their town ordinance, especially in terms of McCory's Beach and Island Park, we always allowed for people to be fishing after hours there, and if they were parked there for the purpose of fishing after hours, we would patrol there, we would, you know, speak with people there, determine why they were there. And again, if they were fishing at night, that's fine, we, you know, off we would go. So my question is, are you looking, and it sounds like you are, to have some mechanism in place in your ordinance to allow for people to be fishing after hours?
People can fish after hours, but at Grinnell's Beach, we, we close the gates at 10.
Right, understood, yeah.
They can fish after hours, that's, that's not a restriction.
Right.
It's, it's, it's just for parking.
Yeah, that's right, that, that's the question, is the parking.
But that's, but that's nothing different, that's what we've been doing all along, we close that gate.
Right.
There have been suggestions of overnight parking with a pass for fishermen.
For front.
For Fogland, and we'll have to talk about this.
Yeah.
But that's what this is about, to get your ideas and come back with something new. And this, I just wanted to do this early because it's going to happen soon.
And, and know the parking issue, I know it's important to all of you, but especially at Fogland, it's not just about the fishing, in fact, that's probably the lesser issue.
The least of our problems.
It's other people going down, building bonfires, doing the things that-
Burning tables.
The council president said, burning our picnic tables.
Like, we had bringing picnic tables there, they burnt.
And really wreaking a little bit of havoc for the people who live down there.
Yeah.
So just know that that's not aimed at fishing, it's aimed at trying to control a bigger issue.
Right, gotcha, understood. And lastly, you know, I'd just like to say that, again, Rich, myself, and I'm sure all the other anglers here, you know, we come from a group of anglers who are responsible and knowledgeable, you know, people. I can't speak on behalf of all anglers, much like you all would not want to speak on behalf of all politicians. So, you know, we're all human, you know?
All right.
I'm just saying. You know, but they're also, you know, we already have things in effect for littering, for child wear, for all kinds of things like that. There's plenty of legislation in place for those things. Also, just so you know, South Kingston also regulates their beach parking, so that's just another community as a resource if you want to reach out to, to find out about that.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I think the fines and fees are going to help, too, because they're the same people going down there doing the same stuff. And, but the police can tell them to leave next night, there's, there, there's no repercussion. So that's why the police said, the police chief said that would help, too. If these same people are doing the same things, they're going to get fined, and then they're going to be told they can't, they can't be there anymore.
Yep, gotcha. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Who's my next? Thomas Cody.
Hello, I'm speaking on the same exact subject.
It's okay.
My name's Thomas Cody, I live on 48 Island View Drive in Tiverton. I moved to Tiverton relatively recently, but I've been fishing down here for quite a while. I grew up in Connecticut, and in Connecticut, it is incredibly difficult to access the shoreline, especially at night. That was one of the things I loved about Rhode Island, but I'll never go back to Connecticut. And one of the things that always has made Rhode Island special for angling, for anglers, and I think everyone here can speak to that. I, like some of the others, wanted to make sure we clarified that Fogland is one of the specific areas I wanted to talk about, and making sure that there was a compromise in place that would allow nighttime parking. Personally, I'm a rule follower, and if it's something that's like, well, no one will bother you, it's on the books that you can't park there for 7:00, don't worry about it, I'm not going to go, because if I get the ticket, I just have bad luck. And that's it. So I would really like to see a compromise where there is, it is a Satch West and it is a year from the purchase date. I'm sure there can be something different, but it's a twen, almost positive, it's $25. I purchased it, because I am a rule follower. But, so you purchased a permit and it put it in your windshield, displayed, and they can come around and make sure that they know who's parking there at what time. I just would like to see that compromise and find a way where anglers can access Fogland, the ones who cherish it, like myself. I have kids, I bring them there to go fishing. The north side, I know people talk about, we've already had this discussion.
Of Grinnell's Beach?
Of Fogland.
Okay.
Cove.
The cove. Would be one area they would wanna make sure stays open to access.
Yeah, we're not looking at changing that.
Yep, it wasn't clear in the ordinance previously, so I just wanted to make sure.
This isn't as drastic as it seems. I know everybody looked at it and said, oh, my God, but it's not as drastic. It really wasn't meant to be as drastic as it seems to all of you.
It was especially the parking at night that concerned me at Fogland in particular. And making sure that there was a way that people who can use it responsibly, if it's a missed revenue opportunity, even if it's a nominal fee for, for a overnight parking pass.
It really has nothing to do with revenue. It has to do with what happens at night down at Fogland.
And it's a good way to keep track of it.
We're aware where it's, it's not all the fishermen. We're aware of that.
Yep, so if it's able, if you're able to do it with a resident, with a sticker, or it just, honestly, the National Wildlife Service that is just something you print out online and you stick in your...
You stick it in your...
In your windshield, so. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for the suggestion. TJ Harris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the, for the chance to speak. My name is TJ Harris. I'm actually a Middletown, Rhode Island resident, but I'm also the president of the Aquinic Island Striper Team. We have several members that live in Tiverton. A few are here tonight, actually, and a large majority of the club actually come and fish the areas where we're talking about tonight. I like the idea, I was, that was one of the first things I was gonna talk about, is a parking pass, similar to what we do down in Satch West. I think that there's gonna be a lot of collateral damage if we close areas in regards to fishermen fishing other areas that are already fairly crowded, like behind Riverside Bait and Tackle, and places that are already really suffering. And it's just, I mean, not that we're, wanna spread out the, you know, the bad stuff, but, you know, it, it would make it less congested in a lot of spots that are already pretty over well, you know, beaten over pretty hard, so. Also, one of the collateral damages, generally good stewards of nature are gonna be affected by this. Guys that go down there that are, like myself, when they see a piece of trash on the beach, you just pick it up. You know, I understand everything is a compromise. It'd be open to closed areas that should obviously not even have to be assigned for it, but, you know, during the daytime, closing the area of the swim area and stuff like that at Grinnell's. But I think keeping the abutment open and the actual walkway itself, it's already a bit of a challenge because there is no parking, but I think that if we close that area to fishing, it would, a lot of other areas, local areas would suffer, along with anglers, so.
Thank you. What I'm leaning towards is, and it's one of the suggestions, is after a certain hour you can fish on the abutment. But like, like up until, say, seven, eight o'clock at night, you can't.
Sunset.
Sunset, that's what me and Dave were talking about. Or fishing only allowed on the very end, but something like that. But I still think that the residents deserve to be able to walk there at six, seven o'clock at night without the commotion that's happening right now.
Oh, I, I agree. I think that a pass, a pass could really solve a lot about it, because I don't think those parties that, you know, they're, I don't think they're the ones that are gonna go to Town Hall and see you and get a pass to go and park.
It's quite something, I don't know if you know what I'm talking about, if you've ever been down there.
Yeah, I have, I have. I take my kids down there, and it gets pretty wild. I, I, I won't, you know, argue with you. I've been shorefishing for 40 years of my life, and it's all over the place. I've fished from Key West to Maine, so it's, it's everywhere, and it's just, it's, you're gonna punish the good ones as long, as well as, as the bad apples. And I think that enforcement can help other options, you know, like a pass to get you on, to get you access, and, you know, if you don't have your pass, then you have to...
You can't go in.
You can't go. And then maybe one day that'll open up the parking to night fishing at Grinnell's, if you have a pass like Satch West, which could, you know, open up some doors to a lot of other people, so.
Thank you.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
So, help me, I'm not, I only grew up freshwater fishing, because I was from Pennsylvania, so I'm not a saltwater fisher. What's the draw of fishing from the abutment, other than if I'm handicapped, and that's the best place, the only place I might be able to do it?
Well, you know, there's a lot of older, older people that like to fish in there, and people are handicapped, and it really just gives access younger families, too. I mean, I have a 12-year-old, and yeah, he could probably do okay on the rocks, but I know that if we're gonna go throw a couple lines out, I'm gonna keep him in the safe area on Sol, you know, terra firma, so.
Okay.
Those rocks can be pretty shifty, slippery, and, you know, I'm just, I, I don't want that over my head, my son rolled his ankle, because...
But some of the fishing area at Grinnell's is not rocky. It's, it's the sand in front of the parking lot.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And that's another spot, too.
I just wanna make sure I know.
Yes, yeah, that's a good spot at night. Some guys will fish there. In the, in the fall, false alborcore come in, it's a species of fish, just like a mini tuna, pretty much, and guys really, they, they come in that cove, it's, it's pretty neat. They always, the bait gets trapped in there, and I've seen a lot of people really like to go in there and chase the false alborcore off the beach. Now, this is in October, so there's no one really on the beach to serve a problem, and it's in late fall. But, you know, during, on a Saturday, if someone is trying to fish off the beach, obviously, you know, you should not be such a knucklehead, and get, you know, that person needs to get out of there, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Reposa.
Good evening.
Hi.
Adam Reposa, carpenter street. So, the parking pass, you know, I really didn't know what I was gonna talk about when he come up here, kinda glad I got to hear everybody else talk. I don't know that that's a great idea. I think that it would be really simple to get yourself a pass, and then it's like a golden ticket to do whatever you want. I think there needs to be more access at Grinnell's. I don't think the gate should be closed. I think the police need to do a better job with enforcement. The police, the details that you guys have, the seasonal police, they need to do a little better job with enforcement. Yeah, I, I think Rhode Island just has some of the best coastline access, you know, in New England. It's, it's one thing that, you know, I love about this area. Now, I think Mike asked about the draw at Grinnell's, so, and you guys are talking about people...
Well, at the abutment specifically.
The abutment specifically, so, you have scup, and you have the dog, and you talked about people just getting in there to go night fishing, you know, eliminating fishing off the abutment, letting people go at night to dog. You're notoriously scared of the dark.
I didn't know that.
So...
All right.
That'd be an issue, you know, for, for the short season that Rhode Island has in the spring and the fall for the dog.
All right.
I, I don't really have, you know, really, it's, it's more the enforcement issue, I think. And actually, I wanna go over to, to Stone Bridge, the, that area, the, I'm sorry, Nanticoake Bridge. Is that on?
This is in part of this.
Oh, okay, so we're just on A?
It's a C R M C access point.
Nanticoake isn't any of this.
What did you guys have on here? Didn't you have something for...
It's just the town beaches.
No, Nanticoake. D E M has total control over that bridge.
All right, okay, this, I'm sorry.
Right, did it say something about Nanticoake?
No, it doesn't. I, I misread the, the Stone Bridge walkway area.
Oh, okay.
I missed that.
Yeah, because there's been issues in Nanticoake, but the D E M...
And the non-residents. Yeah, I, I think we should eliminate mass residents from coming in on, on off-hours.
I'm glad you qualified that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, I think that we should do what Little Compton has installed and keep ma, and keep mass residents off of our, I mean, Tiverton needs something for them, and we don't have anything. We don't have Grinnell's. That's, that's a state beach now, basically. That's not a town beach, that's a state beach. We don't have anything that is just for us.
And I agree, I have no problem with that. I have no problem saying...
Without the fishermen who are, who are looking at restrictions, paying for that abutment, and paying for the work that was done at Grinnell's, then, then we take a beating? We can't, we can't fish there now, even though our fishing license is paid to have that work done. You know, and our hunting license is paid to have that work done. Fogland Beach...
Well, I do, I have to tell you, the residents feel the same way, like, we can't walk on this abutment, and our taxes are paying for it, too. So if there's some kinda happy medium, and I don't think it's you guys.
And Denise, I, I have to say, I go down there three or four times a week. I'm down there all the time. I catch a sunset with my girlfriend, I go down there with my daughter, we're cheesing town, I ride my bike down there. Yeah, there's kids running around, there's people fishing, but it's nothing that I've ever said, you know, I, I feel unsafe, or, you know, this is ridiculous. Like, people are just having fun. Okay, there's some little bugs, there's, you know, some fishermen, there are people who might just leave a little bit of trash on, on the abutment, some bait, you know, a little bit of fishing line, but I think that we can fix that without restriction. Or, you know, I mean, you talked about a, a little girl who almost fell. I, you know, poor kid, that's her father's problem.
Right, I know, but because that gate was open, we would've been responsible for that, because we should, you know what I mean?
But that's the gate, that's not the entire length of that abutment. If some kid's running along that and falls in...
They were fishing in that edge.
Right, well, that's a, a true and a scup area.
They shouldn't even have been there, oh.
The, the inside of, of, of Grinnell's.
That's all of the Albea area.
Right, right.
Okay.
I, I mean, I have one idea for, this might be a money grab, this might be a way to keep, I don't know, keep an eye on people at the beach, but why don't we start some type of fire ring rental system at Grinnell's? Where you come in in the morning, and you grab a fire ring from the guard, and that keep, maybe you pay 40 bucks for that, and then you have to be out at midnight. You leave the fire ring behind, the guards come in the morning, they pick him up, but, you know, it's, it's maybe a way for at least people from out of state to enjoy Fogland for a fee, and which would be like a substantial fee. And also, it's a way for you to keep an eye on people who might wanna go and, you know, have a good time. And, you know, you, you, did the, the police go down at 12 o'clock and shove everybody out, which is really what they used to do in Little Compton, until they, you know, put the gate up.
And they really...
They don't stay that late. They, they close it down at 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock.
Right, right, well, I mean, growing up, it was, it was a little different. It's, it's much different now than it was.
Little Compton, actually, if you're on the beach, at far P M.
Yeah.
They kick everyone out, but Little Compton residents.
Right, right.
No, if you have a season pass, they don't. If you have a season pass, they don't.
Yeah, which is, or 300 bucks, or pretty close. Right, well, and this is, but this is kind of the, the point I'm getting to with Fogland.
Season pass, all those, they don't do that.
Okay.
If you have a stack of fire rings, and you, you know, you sell them for 50 bucks a day, first come, first served basis, and you get to stay there for the day for 50 bucks if you're a non-resident. I mean, residents can pay a less fee for a fire ring, but it's a, it's a way to get some money from, you know, from, from out of state, and also keep an eye on, on non-residents who might be there to tear it up. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And...
Can you miss please?
Nope, you're coming now, Jamie, come on. I let you talk before, I, I think she, yeah, come on, Jamie. I wasn't sure if you had more to say.
Oh, no, I wanted to talk to public carry.
Okay.
Says if I was here, I might as well talk. I'm not proud of you.
Okay. Yes, I'm gonna let you, yeah, I just wanna finish my list. I tend to forget to finish my list.
I just wanted to interview you a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna have you come on.
Trouble maker. Public carry.
Jamie French, Craig Avenue. I, I go down to the abutment of Stone Bridge quite often, and it's usually in the evenings in the summertime, and in the daytime in the winter. I have never seen fishermen fish anywhere other than where they should be fishing. I have never seen fishermen leave any crap anywhere, I've never seen any hooks, I've never seen any line. Once a fisherman did leave his catch, I'm sure that that was a mistake. Other than that, I have never seen anything, other than sometimes people are laughing and having fun, it's, you know, it seems like a good thing. For me, having mobility issues, walking the bridge is much easier than walking the sand. When I get there at night, if I get there at 9:30 at night, and there's people in the parking lot having fun, but they're not fishing, they're doing their thing, but I know I can go out on that, on the bridge and walk out there, because I know there's fishermen out there. And because I know there's fishermen out there, it's a safe place to be. And you can walk out there, and you know every night there's going to be fishermen out there because of where they park, and, and because it's nighttime in the summer. And I don't care where people are from, if they're from Fall River or Massachusetts or Rhode Island, and if you were to restrict it to only Rhode Island people, sometimes there wouldn't be anyone out there. And, and, I mean, they let us go to Market Basket, I don't know why we can't let them come into Rhode Island. You know, it's, also, I think that a pass is a ridiculous concept, because if you're going to have the police coming down and checking passes, why don't the police just come down and take care of people who are being mischievous? If they come down and see people having a fire when they're not supposed to be or doing damage, that would be so much more productive than them walking around looking to see if someone has a parking pass in their window. And there's, there's safety in numbers. I mean, if, the more people who use these areas and recreate, the less chance that there's going to be a problem. If there's a lot of fishermen out fishing, it's less likely you're going to be damaging the picnic tables, because they may call the police on you, and so... That's not what's happening, Jamie. That's not what's happening. It, I'm, I'm not sure what you're responding to, I'm just saying, I, I, when, when it's the beach patrol last year, we're there all the time. If there was all of this, how, this hooliganism going on with the fishermen, you would've thought that the beach patrol, who were paid to, to be watching them, would've done something. And, you know, it, it just, to me, the, you've made it even more difficult for fishermen because you restricted the fishing, the parking outside of Grinnell's. It's always been like that, though. That, that's not new. It's always been like that. It just seems that there should be, if you're going to let, people should be able to fish at night, and there should be a designated place that people can park legally, so that they can park, because the neighborhood has restrictions, Main Road has restrictions, everywhere has restrictions in that area, and it shouldn't be just a for the local people. People should be able to. If it's 10 o'clock at night and I wanna watch a meteorite shower, why am I getting thrown out? Thank you. You're welcome. Do, do you wanna speak?
No, like I said, I just had a couple of things to introduce.
Well, as far as the police enforcement, this is part of why we're putting fines on some of this, because the police would go down there, talk to people, leave, come back, and they're still there.
What will the fines pertain to, though? If fines pertain to anything to do with fishing, I don't want you fishing there, you're, you're here, and you shouldn't go along.
Well, no, if you are not in, if you are not in the designated areas, then there's fines. So if you're fishing over where the swimmers should be, and at this point, it's on the abutment, too, but we might change that.
So what happens in my, in my mind here, though, is that, that rule has a very, that's a large area, so out of swimming time, I'm in the swimming area.
Come up to the mic.
Yeah, just come up.
Out of swimming area, I find a boil of fish happening at night in the swimming area. Nobody's swimming, I wanna cast on it. Cop comes down, I'm in trouble now.
Yeah, and one of the reasons for that is, and Chris can talk on it, people are going there swimming, and there's hooks that they're getting stuck in their feet, there's dead fish, there's, and the poor people that show up at 9 o'clock to open the gates, has all this mess going on in that area, and all these swimmers coming.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, if you step below mean high tide line, you're on federal jurisdiction, right? You can fish anywhere?
Not, not, not.
No, 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 no.
Not if it's a designated fishing area.
Not if there's a designated fishing area, and I checked with DEM. As long as we, when we got the grant, they said you need one designated fishing area, that's all you're required to do, and that's what we did.
Okay.
Which is where?
Which is the way it's always been.
It's at the east end of the beach.
The east end of the beach.
I'm sorry, the west end of the beach, west end of the beach.
Yeah, I don't know.
Going towards Port, it's, it's towards the channel.
Yeah, it's down there, but that's always been the.
And it's marked, it's been marked.
It's been marked since we got the DEM, uh, the whole grant and everything, it's always been there.
It's one of seven state special provisioned areas, too, which is a big point. It says in the DEM regulations, Stone Bridge, Tiverton, is an area where you can keep fish that are slightly smaller than, than all of the places, and it's one of seven within the state, so it has a significant importance. There's two places, one in Newport, Fort Adams, and then Fort Weatherill and Jamestown, but those are the only three in the entire East Bay that we have, it's a special provisions DEM area.
Right, but I do know that when we got the grant, and let me tell you, we, we, we went through all the bells and whistles of it. Um, they told us that it's law, they, they made us map it out, and we got the stamp. Okay, that's fine. So a swimming area and a fishing, and they said we could definitely have one and the other, and do it that way. I mean, if you wanna question this, but.
The Constitution permits, or the Constitution does not ensure, thank you, John, it does not ensure that the exercise of the right to fish, gather seaweed, leave the shore to swim or pass along the shore will be totally unburdened by the government. So you can use your police powers to an extent.
But in the state, I thought we fought that. I thought we did.
Well, how, this is case law, this is the.
Yeah, this is access.
Like I said, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Pretending to what Jamie said with policing your permits, if you don't police your permits.
Right, and that's what we.
So the issue, and that's why these ordinances are being crafted today, is while there were rules, there was nothing to enforce the rules. So without enforcement, it's useless. I can tell you all day long, please stop doing that. Without any way to.
Write me a fine.
Harm you by saying there's a fine, there's a penalty, there's a clause that you're gonna be bound by, that, you know, then, that, now, this would provide the police that power. Now, I, I applaud all of you, because it's, you know, obviously, you're very well versed in what you do, you enjoy what you do, and I can guarantee each and every one of you are very responsible fishermen. And it's the two percent of the people, as we know, that create us, of having to create these types of ordinances. It's, this is not directed at the lion's share of the people. It's the, and I don't need to have a policeman down there just monitoring this, this stuff, because it, it is idiocy when they have other more important places to be and do it.
How do we get DEM to come and police us? We get, we get so.
It is. Yes, it is.
No, no, no. Adam, Adam.
I didn't say what he said, Adam. Adam, that's not what he said. He didn't call you idiocy.
No.
He didn't say, he said having a police officer down there to monitor is idiocy.
No, having a police off, presence there constantly is not what we should have to do, because they have other, because, excuse me. Adam, because they have other more important things to do around town. That's what he said. If all of you were the ones down there only fishing, it wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, two thirty in the morning, there's a lot, lot going on in Tiverton. When you can't send a cop down there.
All right. Please don't yell out from the audience. All right.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um.
Can we get your name, sir? Jason Santos.
Jason Santos.
The police chief was, the police chief is part of this whole project. Um, and he did recognize that, that he's gonna have to do more patrols down there. Um, but it helps them if there's fines, because, yeah, and there's gonna be better signs, and we are gonna put the signs in Spanish and Portuguese also.
Can they do something about the ramp area, making that a trailer only at Fogland? Because I'll come down there early morning and there'll be people already there using that.
That's the, yeah. That's the state.
That's the spot. It is the state, but that's a spot that's in question. But it doesn't get, it hasn't been enforced, because there'll be cars there, four or five, you know, that have plates.
Oh, that's us.
Oh, that's us.
Is that a town, is that a town boat ramp?
Yes.
So you guys have the ability to enforce that boat ramp?
Yeah.
So we have tried to, to work on that as well, too, because we recognize it's a problem.
Yeah, there's really no parking for a, a truck with a trailer.
So we have, we have people who don't wanna pay to park at the beach and then go over, and believe me, we, we are well aware of it, and we, we do address it.
But if we were to want to use that boat ramp to, say, put a boat in.
You should be able to use it.
For sure.
Where are we gonna park that truck and the trailer down?
At night, you're talking about?
No, 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 there, there is some limited parking there.
There is.
There is.
Right, it's just not so small.
Right to the side of that.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, if we can keep cars out of there that aren't launching a boat, that's the issue.
Right, maybe, maybe signage, is there signage?
I don't, I'll look to see.
Well, look, because we're gonna do a lot of signage. Trust me.
We agree with you, that has been an issue, we, we're trying to crack down on it.
So I think we got good input.
It's very good ideas.
Yes, and we weren't planning on voting on this today. I'm gonna actually continue the hearing. And we'll, go ahead, Doug.
Um, Madam Chair, I just have a couple of comments after listening to all the public comment, and I think some of the comments from the council are correct. The, the issues that we're running into are not the people present here to testify this evening.
No.
Um, you know, anybody who's part of a, you know, Anglers Association or anything along those lines, like you obviously have respect for, you know, nature and the environment, and I'm sure you're carry in, carry out, not leaving a mess, we get it. The two points that I did wanna make, uh, one, obviously, I feel like we're missing an opportunity for revenue generation at Fogland, uh, and, I'm sorry, I take it back, not at Fogland, at Grinnell's Beach, and given that uh, recreation has been kind enough to install the, you know, parking, you know, uh, machines, and you can do it right on the app, that's an opportunity for us to very easily implement an overnight parking, you know, component that would be very easy for uh, police to enforce and get more access to, uh, Grinnell's Beach for fishing, so that's certainly something we should explore, whether it's through these ordinances or through a different one. Um, the second piece is, and this has been a gripe of mine for a long time, on, uh, as it, as it relates to enforcement, you know, DEM, they have, I think, three, at least three, um, enforcement officers that live in town, and I swear to God, those guys don't do anything enforcement related. I see them, I live down by Sapawat, they love going down there at two o'clock in the afternoon in February, and that's when you see them. But come the summertime, when there's fifty people out on the beach, they are nowhere to be found. So, uh, maybe it would be hoovas to, uh, have the administrator, or maybe we could draft something to send to DEM and ask them to, I don't know, maybe do their job.
Both officers across the whole state.
I, I know three of them live in Tiverton, so. Um.
All right.
So that, and that was my only point, is, you know, if we could get some support from DEM to, you know, actually come by and check, right, I mean, we're talking about undersized fish at Grinnell's, like, you know. Yeah. No one checks, and, and, and for what it's worth, you know, I used to work at Bridgeport Seafood, we had the guys that would come in and down behind, I'd, the, down behind, um, Nonquit Pond, and there'd be thirty people back there fishing, and he'd be in the building with the binoculars, oh, they're taking undersized fish, but there's thirty-seven of them and one of him, and so zero fines were ever issued, so. When it comes to enforcement, DEM is probably the most lax of them all. Uh, and that was it, that's all my comments. Thank you.
I still have the hearing open, uh, the public hearing open, anyone else? Yes. Yes, come on up, he's just talking to us from his chair. Like he's in the living room, just talking away.
Jeff Gross. I was a Tiverton resident until a month and a half ago. You folks have an enforcement problem, cu- cut and dried. Litter is a two hundred dollar fine. Beer, open containers in public is an arrestable offense. Open burning, I'm not quite sure on the town part of it, but anything to do with state land, if it was granted from the DEM, uh, open burning is a finable offense, but, hey, Democrats, let's ban and restrict people, good people, fishermen in this audience, for instance. Towner Narragansett tried this. Trudy Cox, I don't know if many of you know her, she was with Save the Bay, she took Narragansett to task, right to the First Circuit Court of Appeals. Narragansett lost bad. They were actually forced to provide, uh, open parking to the fishermen on Hazard Avenue, for instance. Charleston, we all know they lost, and I just found out this afternoon, Cranston had tried to pull what you folks are taking up, and they lost as well. You need cleanup, that's what Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts are for. I'm sure many of them could, uh, use their, uh, litter cleanup bad, badges to take care of this problem. So, don't interfere with the fishermen, because we're a force to be reckoned with. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak before I close the hearing?
You're gonna, you're gonna close it now?
No, we're gonna.
No, I'm gonna continue, but I haven't.
No, you don't close, continue it to the next meeting.
All right, I'm sorry, you're right. Yeah, come on up. Is he gonna yell at me, too?
Good evening, Chairman, or members of the board. Fifty-eight merit, my name is Brian Palakiko. I agree, I think there's an enforcement issue. I myself work for a municipality, and I can drive throughout anywhere parts of Tiverton, we have accumulation of waste and stuff like that. To put the burden on us fishermen, maybe having the gate open past ten, those members will take the trash with them, because they're walking longer distances with their catch, or, you know, any trash. I agree, in and out, you know. I bring a bag with me, I teach my four-year-old son to pick up trash as we go, you know. To be able to restrict our nature, or our fruits of our nature is kind of cumbersome, and I don't believe it's something that should be done. Passes could be something that we can generate revenue for future enforcement, but, you know, to strictly restrict people on something, I think it's a, a no-brainer, and it's a hard no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the committee will get back together and.
Just have one last comment.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanna reiterate, and I don't think I heard a single person up here say it, we, we do not wanna restrict access, and some of the comments we got tonight, I think we're actually looking at expanding access with the, uh, with the parking, potentially with the parking pass. It's not about restricting access at all. And I also feel personally, and we'll, we'll get, we'll cross that bridge at some point, I also think that that parking pass overnight could, could help. Uh, because again, you got those teenagers that are causing problems down in Fogland. At least there's somebody down there to call now. So, you know, I, I'm one of seven, we, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, but I appreciate the feedback tonight, I think you guys are great, and again, it's not about restricting access, the only piece was the abutment, but I think there's compromise to be done there.
Anyone else on the council right now? All right, well, thank you, hope we continue to the next meeting. And, um, hopefully, we'll, it will be the next meeting, it depends on if we can get together and tweak this. All right, thank you.
Did I miss the bus for this term run on stuff?
It's not on tonight.
Not yet, sure.
No, not yet, yes.
No, but it's in the future, right?
Yes, yes.
How do I, uh, gather that information so I know it, the town or?
We, we meet every second and fourth Monday, so look at the town.
Secretary of State's website for open meetings.
I'm familiar, I work for Middletown, so. I would love to, because I don't know, it's a closed agenda at this point, but I think short-term rentals in Tiverton is something that should be highly against. And I don't know what you guys, how you guys feel, but.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna move us along here. So Denise, just before you go, that was for all three?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Let's see, appointments and resignations, acknowledgement of resignation of Peter Brumante from the planning board, effective three, four, twenty-four, you have a letter from Peter, email, letter from Peter.
Mr. Vice President?
With his regrets.
We don't require him at the moment.
Stating that, uh.
We don't have to vote on this.
He, um, he, uh, has multiple professional scheduling conflicts and demands, he's enjoyed his service, he, and I believe, I agree with him that he's added value to his time on the planning board. He'll be missed. Um, do I have a motion to?
We don't have to vote. We don't have, we don't have to vote, but I agree with you.
Well, we usually accept with.
He, he, um. Peter, um, as the liaison to the planning board, Peter has been very effective on that board, and he will be missed.
So can I have a motion to accept with regrets and thank yous?
I will make a motion to accept um, the resignation of Peter Brumante from the planning board, effective three, four, twenty twenty-four, with regrets.
Second.
And thank yous.
And thank yous.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Moving on, where did I just put my agenda? Director Rogers, one up.
Thank you, Mike.
Rideout Municipal Road and Bridge Program for FY twenty-five.
Yes. Uh, DPW does request to report to the town council that we have sufficient available funds to participate in the program. It is contingent upon the Rhode Island General Assembly's passage of the governor's proposed budget, allocating five million dollars to the program. Tiverton's reimbursement would be one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and five for applicable and approved projects. Uh, this program is similar to the Rideout MRBP fiscal year twenty-four through fiscal year twenty-six, which we're presently participating, but it's on a smaller scale. I'm not sure there's any vote needed for this, we did, the town council did approve the participation form and, uh, last one, on the last meeting.
Okay, so this is more informational for us?
Because it does segue into the request for the budget transfer. So we have.
Any questions on that part?
So that doesn't require a vote? Okay.
No, we, we already voted.
I know, but I remember the agenda meeting, there was some discussion.
Just really update on where we are.
Okay, and then you wanna do the next one?
Yep. Yes, please. So, we have enough money, but without the transfer, we have to do it in two sequences. And obviously, contractors would much rather do the, you know, the four hundred thousand than do three hundred and come back for a hundred. So we do have sufficient funds in fifty-five dash, fifty-five forty dash sixty-seven ninety-four, but we wanna transfer from fifty-five forty, sixty-four fifty-one, so we can do it in one shot.
And we like when you do that, because you're using money and it's not gonna be in the next budget.
Well, we do try to use the money.
Madam Chair, um, can we make this move, because it was my understanding that whatever we voted, that whatever was gonna be left over in snow, we were gonna roll forward into the following budget year and restrict that account?
It's paving.
Snow removal?
No, it's paving, gravel. It's not snow, salt. It's, I don't think it's snow, but we can look.
Cause we, cause we went through this with Director Rogers, too, about making sure he loaded up on sand and salts and spend that money now.
Right, but this is snow removal, this is different, this isn't, this is plowing, right? This is the plowing.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know what you're talking about.
Does this have anything to do with salt?
No.
No, but I'm not sure we restricted salt either.
I don't think so either, I think that we had money left at the end of last year.
Yes.
And. And what we did. Were supposed to go way up. Right, that's right. And we wanted to make sure that we kinda stocked up before the prices went way up.
I, I was, I was, as John was mentioning, an advocate for sixty-four fifty-one and the sand, salt, gravel being restricted, but it wasn't.
Right, I don't think we did it, but the thing is, it's at the end of the year, when all is said and done, and, and, and there's money left over without the transfers, then that, then, then that goes into paving.
Yes.
Okay, so it's at the end of the year, when it's all said and done, and when Denise does all her numbers, then whatever's left in that account a percentage, or whatever goes in there. All right. So I need a, I need a motion.
Uh, make a motion that we approve the fifty thousand dollar transfer from fifty-five forty, sixty-four fifty-one to fifty-five forty, sixty-seven ninety-four, as requested by the director.
Second.
Motion to be made in second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
There you go. Nine C, Counselor Edwards' discussion, possible vote to support resolution opposing H seventy-nine eighty-three creating the office of, um, State Building Commissioner. And you see the resolution in front of you?
You wanna, you wanna read it, or?
Do you wanna read it?
I don't.
It doesn't really matter.
Do we need to? No, I don't think we need to.
Is this okay with everyone?
It's basically a carbon copy of.
Yeah.
As close as I could make it.
Love it.
All right.
Madam Chair, I, I, uh, make a motion that we, uh, vote in favor of the resolution, um, and have you sign it and distribute it to the other municipalities and our state delegation.
Second motion.
Motion to be made in second, all those in favor? Uh, nine D is gonna be tabled to the next meeting, correct? Chris, yes, okay. And then E is Administrator Carter's discretion, possible vote on National Small Business Week twenty twenty-four, a possible motion.
So they asked that we present this to the town council, um, I think we had shared on last meeting, but there wasn't a provision to vote for it. So we did have the provision to adopt the proclamation.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Uh, motion that we approve and adopt the proclamation, as it is before us.
Second. Motion to be made in second, all those in favor? And next is me. So you have in front of you the, the agenda for April thirteenth. Chris, um, worked on this, um, so all, so that's all we're discussing on Saturday. Now, we're gonna need a second meeting, a third meeting. We were thinking, the next Saturday is April twentieth, is anyone around?
Negative.
I'm, I'm pretty positive I'm around.
Okay, I'm around.
It's Saturday morning, it's a.
Yes, yes.
Ordinarily, but you're hitting it at school vacation week, so.
Yeah, well. But it'll be tele, um, we're gonna make sure the cable is here, so you can watch it, and we'll send you any changes we make or any suggestions. And then April, I have them all here, I'll give you copies, April twenty-seventh, Tiverton Library is coming, because they can't make the other meetings, and that will basically have to be school committee. And I've already talked to, um, the school committee chairman to tell him tentatively that's when it's gonna be, 'cause sometimes it's hard to schedule with them, so I'm giving them advance notice. April twenty-seventh. Twenty-seventh for the schools.
Question, um, we had submitted a rather lengthy list of requests, which should have been pretty straightforward, click, export, and send them over, and I don't believe we've received any of that yet.
This story, um.
I just wanna make sure we're prepared for the agenda.
I'll just tell you. Thursday I called Chris. No, I called Jerry, that's what happened Thursday. I said we haven't received it yet. He said he was gonna talk to the superintendent. He said he was going to talk to the superintendent. The superintendent on Friday emailed Chris, we would get it this morning. We did not get it this morning. I called Jerry at 4:00 this evening, he said he'll get back to me, and he was going to call the superintendent once again. I'm hoping that we get it, and I did make it perfectly clear that that was the best way that we can assess what to give them, and we need to know actuals. There was some line items that I've been concerned about, and I need to know actual spending. So without going too far, that's what's going on. I'm going to do everything I can, Chris is doing everything we can.
I just want to make sure if we're scheduling a meeting with the School Committee, that we're going to be, we're going to have the information in order to be able to have a, you know, productive discussion.
And well in advance.
Yes. I don't want to get it like the moment I walk in.
I also told Jerry that I feel without this information, I'll postpone the meeting.
Okay.
And they want to do it quickly, so. And I just want to say one more thing, there was three events in town this weekend, and it was the Liam Basketball Tournament, it was the Dog Park Event, and it was the Joe Perry Basketball. They were all extremely successful, a lot of people came, it was really nice to see the community together and having fun for a change. And the volunteers that put all this together, I just have to say, it was an unbelievable job they all did. And David was there with me, at least at the Dog Park, Joe Perry's...
Yeah, I was, I was at the Saturday event, and then Saturday night, the Dog Park Event was a huge success.
And Sunday was a huge success. I wish you all could have seen the vet, when they got the little puppy. It was quite something to see his face when he got it. So I want to thank the community for making it such a great weekend. All right.
I've got a couple of announcements.
Go ahead.
So on April 11, between 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and with the 12 reserved as a rain date, Save the Bay, Open Space Recreation, Tiverton DPW are going to try to recreate the dunes that were destroyed during the winter storms, the plantings of the ceilings for the, for the grasses, and anybody who wants to help, please do volunteer if you can. Again, it's April 11, on Thursday, at 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and also on Friday, it's reserved in case there's any heavy rains. On April 22, Valley staff will be volunteering to clean up the Fogland Beach area and the abutment area, as part of the, you know, there's a lot of cleanups being done, they have volunteered their time and energy. On May 4, Save the Bay will also be working at the Nanticoke Bridge area between 10:00 and 12:00 to clean up that area. And then my last announcement is, on April 17, next week, Dave Robert has told me that after consultation with the REVAL team, that the assessment notices will be mailed out next week on the 17th. Please do not apply the current tax rate to your evaluation, because it is, there is going to be significant changes. The tax rate will get adjusted, we can only raise the levy that we have today based on what that levy is. So, you know, there's, don't panic, look at the number, look at it to see if you think that that's what people have been selling around your area, but that's, you know, we will get to a different tax rate altogether as we go through the budgetary process. So I, I know that people are going to panic, the phones are going to be ringing off the hook next week, it is what it is, but, John, do you...
Would it be better if you were curious, if you took your current tax bill and divided it into your new valuation, that would give you whatever the mill rate would be hypothetically a rough idea as to what that tax rate would be?